Are there any public comment before we start? Move on to new business, discuss planning and zoning recommendation for vacating a portion of the alley adjacent to the Hampton Public Library. Just to give you a brief summary, I guess, of the planning and zoning meeting we had the other night, there was all discussion, a lot of back and forth on how to recommend, and a couple of members are here in the audience tonight, so I guess if they want to talk on theirs, what their opinions were specifically, because I know there were varying opinions, but Chad, I don't know if you guys want to...
Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I think the facts are pretty straightforward as far as, you know, they're asking for and stuff like that. I think the difficulty we had is how to handle it. We had four members there, and Ron Shermer is kind of the chair of that, and he also sits on the library board, so he excused himself from the vote on it. And so, we needed all three of us to agree to something in order to, I guess, move anything forward. And so, there was a lot of discussion back and forth with how to proceed with that, and we had difficulty, all three, agreeing on something, and a couple of... You know, myself, I'll speak for myself, and Phil can speak for himself. I just, I look at, you know, the ordinance as it reads, and we got a recommendation from Doug, and I tend to agree with him there that it's obvious that that alley was used. We had one citizen that lives in that block that does say that he goes in and out of that alley coming out of his driveway. And, you know, as I looked at the ordinance, I say, you know, if it's used, you know, it to me isn't a waste of public taxpayer dollars to continue to maintain it. And I just question, I guess, you know, the idea that it's a big safety hazard to have that closed down so that kids can get out of parked cars in order to enter the library. So, from my standpoint, I just don't see a need to necessarily close down an alley that's being utilized, but, you know, I was willing to at least move the ball forward. I guess you could say pass the buck, if you want to call it that. But, you know, that's more or less what we did, because we couldn't necessarily agree on it. And Mayor Deeds, you know, suggested that that might be an idea too. I mean, I understand that we're just a kind of a body that's appointed, and you guys are elected to, you know, kind of make some of those decisions like that. We wanted it to move forward, because, I mean, we all agree that it's a great project, and we have no problems with, you know, a parking lot there. It's just maybe a matter of how that gets done, whether it's necessary to vacate the alley in order to accomplish, you know, that goal. So, if you had questions or anything, but that's kind of more or less, you know, my viewpoint on this one.
Well, I guess, you know, I don't like to vacate alleys really either, but in this particular case, I felt that the alley isn't heavily used, and honestly, there was talk of development and whatnot, I can't really see development being a big issue behind there in the future. And I guess, we talked about, you know, possibly leaving the alley in, or putting barricades up, permanent barricades up and leaving the alley the right of way in, so we can open it up again someday, but the reality is, it's the city needing the property back to a city-owned property. And so, in the reality of it is, and I don't know what it would take to do that, but I mean, we could unvacate that alley if we ever really need to do that. And so, to me, we argued about it for an hour, and really didn't go anywhere with it. And, you know, I guess I just, I think it's a beautiful design what the library has come up with, and I guess I'd like to see it move, I want to see it move forward in whatever fashion it will. I think you, as a community, as the council, have the ability to make modifications to what we recommended as well. Am I not right, is that right, Ron? I mean, so, if you guys wanted to leave it, leave a right of way through there, you could, and modify how the design goes, but if we didn't vote to vacate that alley, I think it showed a lack of support on the part, and I was real concerned about that. And I really don't think it matters that it's closed or not. I mean, I know there's a couple of houses back there, but they have access out to the south. Doug did mention snow removal, that's probably the biggest issue, because they're going to have to run straight in and stop and back out. So, you know, it's just a difference of opinions, and it doesn't mean that either one of us are right or wrong, but I want to get the thing off, etc., and the whole can suffer. But I think it just, you know, I think it's a neat project, I definitely want to see it happen in one fashion or another. If you guys decide to put the alley through there and do something with it that way, I'm all for it, but we had to move up, etc., and get something done, so.
Yeah, that was the real clear unified message that was coming out of that meeting, was that we want to move the project forward, that was clear. Like you guys said, it's just a matter of how to do it. I think Ron asked Mike Cross some questions about that, on whether, you know, on, like you said, vacating back to city property, you know, and then on vacation, if you want to talk about that a little bit.
Well, yeah, it's just, it's a unique circumstance where the city currently owns the alley, and the city would own, or does own, the library and the parking lot. And so, you know, on a typical vacation of an alley, the city would vacate it and then offer to the adjacent property owner to buy that half that's adjacent to their property, and then the city pays it to them. Well, that's not the case here. The city owns all properties adjacent, so it's a unique circumstance. And Mike suggested, you know, an option would be to have the council, if they desired to close, to close the alley, you could accomplish the same thing as vacating, but simply close the alley by ordinance. And then it would, you know, you'd close it to whatever extent you want, passing ordinance, and, you know, there's no deeding of any property to anyone, because the city owns it, so it's an option to simply close it by ordinance.
Any questions?
Do we have a copy of the proposed plan that we saw the other night? I think it might be beneficial for Craig and Val to be able to see that, because... I would have to echo also that there was a unanimous feeling of everyone, everyone there felt the project was worthwhile. There were varying issues about what was the reason to go with these plans, but... I'd have to agree that I don't think in the future development, that's probably Hampton and the business downtown. I don't see that as happening either. But, I really, after looking at it, if you see these two handicap parking spots, if they were just eliminated, that is grass there, and that's a simple fix, a simple tweak to the great plan that you guys have already put forward, we could close that and not vacate it. It serves both purposes, and it's very easily done. And it all does is eliminate two parking spots. What they would do there, maybe there'd be an extension of the brick or paved area that would be accessing the accessibility of the library. No traffic could go through there, so the safety issue that the library board was very concerned about, as others were concerned, is addressed very well also, but it just in case, in the future, we needed to open it back up again, it would be a little bit more easily done. We only had one complaint or one concern, and that was from one resident who lives on the south end of the alley, who does like to back out of his garage and drive out that alley. He would still have access to the post office. And the post office, of course, they're changing postmasters by every month, I think. As a matter of fact, that day, I think you and Ron said that postmaster, the interim postmaster was leaving at 3:30 that day, she didn't care. So, I think that's an easy fix. I understand, I mean, two of you guys were really in favor that way, understand your position as far as moving it forward, that's what I'd like to see. Let's move it forward, and move it forward in a way that maybe it's easier to put back if we want to.
You know, after listening and looking at the plans, I do think it's just, you know, a real benefit to the city. I agree, let's, you know, leave the option to open it if we ever need to. I'd like to, you know, be honest, probably we probably would never, would need to, but I do like to leave that option open, and I agree, let's move forward, because I just think it'd be great, especially to young people.
Well, supper's at Phil's house at 6:45. Diane and Brady, any thoughts, questions?
After looking at it, and I attended that meeting the other night, and it's, for me, it comes down to the fact that it stays city property no matter what we do. I don't see a real reason to vacate it, but I'd like to see it closed on a semi-permanent basis, if we have to open weekend. But I think it comes down to the fact that it stays city property anyway. There's no real reason to vacate it completely.
I think if the library, whoever expands in the future to add on, it's the only direction it could go anyway, so I think you're going to be having this kind of a conversation at some point in the future. I would agree with the consensus of what I've heard. I think that closing it does make sense, but I think that you don't need to do it on a permanent basis, so let's wait and see what happens the rest of it. You've always got an option to move the other way then if you need to.
Any other thoughts or questions from the public on that? Yeah, go ahead, Senator.
As I, as I listen, what comes to mind is you're weighing two things, and the one, the plan is one everybody agrees with and thinks it's good. And I've said, this is the fourth time I've been on a construction thing since I've lived here, and on all but three of them, they wished they'd done it all at once, or they wished they had done what they were afraid to do because of money, or whatever, and I understand that reason. But on a couple of them, I've had people say, why didn't you do this, or because you didn't want to spend the money on it. This isn't really the money issue, I realize. It fits the surroundings, it, again, as I said the other night, the beauty of this town, this fits right in, more than a business would fit in. And if a business wanted to be there, they want storefronts. So I think the likelihood of businesses in that is far outweighed by what this can do for Hampton, what can do for people who drive through here over the years. The handicap, I have a problem with that, because the front handicap isn't the best since we've lost our parking, and that, eliminating something for handicap people is, and I know what you're saying.
Don't eliminate it, just move it back.
Slide it back.
Yeah.
But it needs to be as convenient for them as it's going to be for everybody that can walk through. But I just think, I really wish, the funny part I find is that alley is so important, it's in such a bad shape, nobody bothers to fix it, it's chunks of concrete. Last time I was down it, within the last, is it still that way? It's just not a very good one, it's not a mandrake, so I, but I just really wish you think about us being able to do what the original plan is. Although I do appreciate how much everybody supports doing something.
Anything else?
Well, I was just going to ask, Mike, with, the consensus seems to be to close the alley, so we do that by ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
So then that would be the next step in the process, right?
Yeah, drafting ordinance, yeah.
Okay. I guess, question I would, I would have, it would be, how far do we go on the project before finances start becoming a question? I know there's been some question about how the project is going to be financed, can you answer that?
Well, I've, I've been emailing with Linda back and forth, and explained to her that the city needs to get some more information as far as the project timeline, and how it's going to be financed, so that the council, you know, since the city does own the property, council needs to, you know, know what the timeline is and how it's going to be financed. And so, we're working on getting all that information gathered, and we'll get it to the council as I get it, so.
Okay. Anything else?
We do have a list of 105 names of people who have signed in support of it, who have brought enough kids and the minutes of that, so.
Leave that with me or the mayor, Linda. Thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing else there, we'll move on to the next item. Fire Chief Kent Wilkinson is with us to discuss selling a 1967 Plymouth Fury Station wagon to the fire department. Thank you, Chad.
Thanks.
We got the station, we got the station wagon before we ran for the convention, and we've been sitting around, and we've got somebody interested in buying it.
Any questions for Kent on the station wagon?
Kent, I showed him pictures of it, because the cars, they know what it is. Basically, in the past, with vehicles, we set them in the library parking lot or any other city property, and, you know, just marketed them, and when we got a decent offer, we'd bring it to council for approval by resolution. I don't know, would, if Kent has any thoughts on that, or what's your...
That'd be fine.
Do you have somebody interested now, Kent?
Yeah. Mike Eddy from Holden.
What's the value of that car, do you think?
He's offering 500 right now, I want, so.
I happened to look that up on Kelly's Blue Book, have you ever done that? It was surprising what that, if you could get what that says it is, but...
Right.
Find it out. I don't know what all this got into, but for an engine and air conditioning or anything like that, but... The other thing I wanted to bring up is that in the past, that we've had with the fire department, we've had discussions, like if you've sold anything, or anything, personally, I'd like to see the money stay with the fire department. And I'd like the rest of the council to consider that used monies for equipment funds and stuff like that, so I don't know what your plans are, but that's what I would like to see, that you guys get the realization benefit.
Pretty much. It was painted, we painted the fire engine red when we got it, but with the signage and stuff on it. We used to take it, we had to take it to go over to actually run for a convention, so you had to run all the different water bowl fights, and get the towns to vote for you, so you had to take all your bunker gear and everything, so that's what it was used for.
That's got $2,500 with the ads in it.
But it is a flammable, and there's a lot of...
I don't think it would hurt to see if, you know, I mean, I appreciate somebody who wants to buy it, but I don't think it would hurt for the benefit for the fire department to see if you could, after, especially after looking at the...
Yeah, I didn't see particulars in that, but that's just a generic search, but you give us that the money goes to the fire department, so it's helping now.
So I would like to see, you know, just, you know, if maybe we could get a little bit more, and if not, then we have somebody that wants to buy, and we're not hurt, I mean, that's all.
Would you guys be interested at all in doing a little bit more research on that? Maybe doing a fundraiser with it, maybe a promotion out of it? There's all kinds of avenues there in the raffle. If that figures anywhere near accurate.
Put it on eBay too, as far as that goes, something. Because it's not going to take that much year running, so it would actually, that'd help the value of it, so.
I think Jeff Spears here to get on, right? I think it's your wrong brand for it, Chad.
I think, I think we're definitely okay to sell this, it's just a matter of how they go about it, I mean, at the very least, I think, based on what we've done in the past, I think we need to at least put it out and kind of offer people to put bids in on it. Outside of that, I mean, sky's the limit if he is on this whole raffle ticket sport or whatever, if he don't want to bother with that, whatever, but...
Okay. Grill tonight, we'll talk about it and see what they want to do. I'll get a run in and...
Grab that sheet there, Kent, if you'll look at that. Like you said, I don't know how close that is, but I'll follow when I see the value, if it was anywhere close to being, we only got 50% of us.
And, well, like I said, there's lots of price war enthusiasts, and it's really not rusty enough, and so, actually only has 27 original, 27,000 dollars.
Really?
Seven corner curves for a long time, I guess, so.
So you're going to just get back to me, Kent, what some firemen's thoughts are?
Just let us know.
Is everybody okay with the fire department getting the money in?
Absolutely.
I think that's...
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thanks, Kent.
Thanks, Kent.
Okay. Next, we have a review of information from KWS regarding First Street Northwest and Highway Three stoplights.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, dating back to, well, quite a long time, but this spring, we had discussion on, trying to get some information on potential costs associated with possibly upgrading the traffic lights at the Highway Three and First Street intersection. We've had just a number of callouts this year with that. Seems like every time they get damp, they go on the fritz. We don't know, I spoke with KWS, that's the guys, you know, what have we got going on? They can't find the problem, whether it's a short loop, which is in the pavement, whether it's a short in a hand manway or something like that, they just can't find these, these potential issues. Not to mention, as I've stated before, these traffic lights are antique at best. We continually struggle, KWS is a big company, and they really do struggle getting us parts and things for these, for these old lights. But anyway, this is, these are some of the numbers I got back. I'm not asking to do anything right now. Seems like they go on the fritz, we go and push a crosswalk button, next thing you know, it's working again. It's crazy, we, it's got to be something electrical, I think, but just struggling with it. So anyway, but these are a couple of options that maybe we can look at a budget time this next year, between now and then, I can have some more discussions with the DOT, get some of their thoughts. Last, last communication I had with them, you know, they still like to see the lights there, which is a little bit different than, so, previous communication we've had years ago, so we're kind of changing it too a little bit, so maybe there's some option to get some assistance. Who knows, I don't know, you know, I can't speak under any hat, but we'll kick every bush we can, but see if we can get some help with something like that. But anyway, just wanted to provide you with that, and I know it took a while, and I had to holler these guys a few times, but after I've called them out about four or five times this year, you know, now they're kind of understanding our demand a little bit better, so.
Questions for them?
If I'm understanding this correctly, we have both of these things, about 26,000 or a little bit better, if we install video detection capability, is that correct?
Right.
Because you've got 1275 for the base option, upgrade the camera, if we replace that, upgrade that camera and add video detection, as I posted.
Footpad. Right. Yeah.
That adds another 13.5.
Right. Yeah, the video capabilities, what they mean by video capabilities is kind of like your, it's an eye that gets stripped by the traffic, or it's not necessarily a video someone's watching, or, you know, it's just kind of like your security lights, you walk by and you trigger it. But that's, basically, that is kind of some new technology that's available, it's been out for a while, but, you know, like I'm going on, you know, there's, and a lot of this is going to be retrofitting too, because we're not changing our fixtures. We want to look at new traffic lights. By golly, that's a whole different animal compared to trying to retrofit and make these work, so.
We've been, DOT will not participate on this with us.
We don't know.
No, you're still trying.
Yeah, I, I think we need to still have some discussions here, and I don't think we've exhausted those efforts yet, so I think there's some more discussion to be had, maybe it might so much change.
We learned a number of years ago when we were talking about making Highway Three a possibility, putting that into the three lanes, the cost of the new set of lights was pretty astounding, I was thinking upwards of a quarter of a million dollars for that one, instead of 3.65, if I remember correctly.
Very expensive, yeah.
But I was surprised to hear you say that they may have changed their mind, because I thought at one time they wanted to take this set out.
Right.
They proposed that years ago.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know if the philosophy's changed due to people possibly working there or where we're at, but, but anyway, I'll talk to Bob Clark a little bit more, and the guys up in Mesa from the DOT will see, you know.
It's definitely a cheaper option than now.
Right, definitely a cheaper option, and something I think that could at least buy us quite a few years, I would think, you know, so, yeah.
Do we have any problems with the ones on Highway Three and 65?
Not very often, not near like we have at First Street. First Street is as easily...
Has it been worked, is that why?
No, there's one new one out there, but that was thanks to somebody driving a semi with a combine on it, helped us with that one, it was a little bit different. But, but yeah, we haven't had, the control panel is still dated and pretty, pretty old, so, but it just hasn't given us the fits that First Street really has.
Anything else for Doug?
Thank you.
Next is discussion of impoundment of vehicles for driving offenses. A little literature here from Mike Cross, and Mike is here, answer any questions you may have on that.
Well, what I would point out, I think, to the council is, if you talk about impounding a vehicle, there's really two kinds of types of impoundment. One is temporary impoundment, because if somebody interferes with their offense, and there's nobody else to move the vehicle off the travel portion of the way. The police has, has authority to impound that vehicle, but only for that limited time that the person has the right to come in as soon as possible, or somebody authorized to that person, and then pay the impoundment fee and pay the cost of towing, and then get the vehicle back. Otherwise, if you impound a vehicle for any long period of time, subject to only being returned under certain circumstances, that becomes a seizure, and so we're limited by statute to that. There's only certain offenses that you can impound a vehicle for, they're usually drug-related offenses, second offense on WI, and I gave you a copy of the auto code for driving without insurance. And under that, the police department has what I see as sort of an option, starting at the bottom of page one of that auto code section, the first three options that are listed on the top of page two. Those are the options that the officer has at the time he stops a vehicle and is going to issue a citation for no insurance. The fourth option that I've underlined on your copies is down a couple of paragraphs below, one, two, and three. And that one allows the police department to impound that vehicle, have it towed to an impoundment yard, and then that vehicle would be held until such time as the person or the owner provided proof of insurance, paid whatever fine there was, court costs, and also paid the cost of towing and impoundment. That one then provides that if they have not paid that within 30 days of the date of the impoundment, that vehicle, vehicle can be treated as an abandoned vehicle and be sold then under the code, which is 321.89 listed in here. So, the city does have that option, and the police department has that option. I visited with Chief Schaefer, and, you know, all it would take is probably a policy there that kind of hinted and indicated that it's probably not a real good idea to do it the very first time an offense occurs, because some people may like to carry their insurance card in their vehicles, some people may have applied for insurance and don't have the insurance card yet, and most of them will pay the fine and get their insurance right away. But repeat offenders, where we have one of that certain period of time, maybe within a year or six months or whatever, it might be, the police department could adopt a policy to go ahead and, on that second offense within that period of time, impound that vehicle and, because that would be... impound that vehicle and because that would be, be really quite costly for the time you consider the cost of towing and the cost of the impoundment fees. So that's kind of where you are on that issue. Do you have any questions about that?
Mike, can I understand this correctly, that state law already has granted this power to local police? That there's nothing the city would have to enact further other than, you know, just a policy the police department would have?
And the city really has no authority to act anything about impounding vehicles. It's all provided by state law. There isn't anything in the code that allows the city to make decisions about impound vehicles if we have a criminal arrest or impound vehicles, if we have somebody driving without a license. All of that is, is governed by state code, so we don't have any authority. City has no authority to make any ordinance impounding vehicles other than to follow the state code. We can, we can adopt the same state code. We've, we've never adopted this three twenty-one twenty B proof of security provision for the city, because when we go to court on that, the fine money goes to the state. Every other case we file under city code, that fine money comes to the city. But this particular provision provides that all fine money goes to the state of Iowa. We go in, you spend your time paying your attorney, paying the police department to take their time and go to court. When you get all done, then the city gets no benefit out of it other than they, you know, try to, to stop somebody from driving without insurance. So the city's never adopted this. Every, every charge that comes under no insurance is filed under state code at the present time. The city can adopt it. We've talked about that a couple of times. And I've talked with county attorney about it, because he said there's no sense in having two. I said, two? Usually what happens is we'll, we'll see a charge filed for no driver's license and then a second charge, and that'll be under the city code. And then a second charge for no insurance, which is filed under the state code. But the county attorney thinks it's a waste of time for both to be there. Makes no difference to me. If you file under city code for both, I'd still have to be there. If you file under state code for both, the county attorney still has to be there. And we're usually in court, you know, quite often on Thursdays when magistrate courts held anyway, so. I think the county attorneys are probably every Thursday. So I, I, I think the way it's been working now is fine. And I think the council can visit with the police chief about whether or not they should maybe look at some policy about impounding vehicles for second or third or fourth offenses, subsequent offenses that occur within a certain period of time. And let the police department make that decision about how they want to set up that policy.
They wouldn't, they wouldn't, the city wouldn't have to, it's me, Mike. Hello? The city wouldn't, the city wouldn't have to create an ordinance. He just simply would write it under Iowa.
Yeah, three twenty, three twenty-one twenty B.
Okay.
And the citation is written under that, and as part of that citation, the officer has authority to impound the vehicle. It's, it's granted by the state code, so we don't have to worry about any ordinance. We don't have to adopt anything. It would just be a matter of what the police department would feel appropriate to do under certain circumstances.
There's no financial benefit for the city to adopt the state code? That wouldn't give us the right to collect the fees, would it? If we adopted the same code as the state?
You mean as far as the fine for, for driving without insurance?
There's no way we can collect that?
No, that goes to the state.
Okay.
Mike, once we impound that vehicle, then it becomes our property, but we're responsible for it then also.
That's correct.
And also, wouldn't our officer, and I guess I could ask the chief, you guys would have to inventory that too, wouldn't you?
That is correct.
Be in and out?
And that's one of the things that, if I have a chance to, the talk that I was gonna bring up, is the time it's gonna take the officer to do that, wait for the tow truck to get there, tow the vehicle away, then to pay for work that has to be done, even if we find somebody, like, they don't come to pick the vehicle up. Then we need to find somebody that's gonna agree to go and do all the paperwork for the abandonment proceedings, otherwise we have to do that. And at this point in time, we don't have the personnel or the office personnel to do that. So I mean, that's, that's one thing that we need to think about. I've got some figures here too of what we ran. Believe, I, it was actually more than what I had, had anticipated. When she printed this off, I was just like, oh. We had ninety-two, and this was from January two thousand twelve to the end of December two thousand twelve. There were ninety-two no DLs. There were eighty-five no insurance. Sixty-two driving while suspended. Now, the driving while suspended, I went and took all of them. If they were driving while suspended for fair to file SR twenty-two insurance, those went in with the driving while suspended. There were nine driving while barred. Of those, if I've got every, if I've got all the figures right, there were fifty of those that had either no DL or driving while suspended and no insurance, both of those together. So no insurance and no, no, and no DL. There were fifty of them. Or it might have been driving while barred and no insurance, you know, that, that also went in there. And if they didn't have SR, that kind of went in there with it, because that's an insurance, an insurance deal. I'm not sure where we'd be at on the no SR as far as towing the vehicle. I don't think that we can tow it for no SR. There would have to be no insurance, so. But I think typically when you, when you see somebody stopped and they're driving under suspension or they're driving without SR insurance or they're driving while barred, they don't have insurance. I mean, that, that's, that's one of the reasons they're probably barred is because they've lost their license and they probably do not have insurance on the vehicle. That's not always true, because it might be that they registered the vehicle on somebody else's name and been able to get the vehicle registered. Because typically what happens under driving under suspension, driving while barred, the vehicle registration is, is jerked by the Iowa Department of Transportation. So that they can't register that vehicle as long as that person who's the owner is, is under suspension, his license is under suspension. That owner is barred from driving. Those, those typical cases where you see that, if, if that person who's driving the vehicle owns it, then those two charges would be filed together and you could make a policy decision and the police department could. And in those cases where you already have somebody driving under suspension or driving while barred with no insurance, we have authority when we charge under this three twenty-one twenty B to impound that vehicle, because we now already have somebody who is flaunting the law by not having a driver's license or under suspension for some reason. So, I mean, there's a lot of options there. I think we'll sit down with Chief Schaefer and go through them. And they may decide just because of manpower needs and the time they have to be far, that it might not be a good policy, but.
Who gets the revenue if, this is B, this is four B here? Who gets the revenue if the thirty days of impoundment pass and is treated as an abandoned vehicle?
Well, revenue first goes toward the towing costs and the cost of impoundment. And then, and then after that, the revenue goes toward paying any fine that's left unpaid and the car costs. I, the rest of it, I, I think, I don't know where it goes. It would provide the statute where it goes. I haven't looked at that three twenty-one eighty-nine.
We're not collecting anything as far as fines, but we, we have the capability of gathering the, the value of the car that's left for the city.
Well, I, I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know. If we, if all specifies. If we're the ones that take the time and do the abandonment proceedings on it, which is a lot of paperwork. Any of the ones that we deal with now that we have a situation like that, I'm more than happy to let either Morris from Dumont or E and E tow the cars. They're willing to go and do the abandonment proceedings stuff on it and have them do the paperwork and then they get the vehicle. They might get two or three hundred dollars out of the vehicle from the junkyard. And those, I mean, those are the, the junkers that we know that probably are not gonna get claimed. But we usually don't have those towed over to Dumont, because they'll do the abandonment proceedings and take the car for the cost of, you know, coming to get it and towing.
So kind of what I'm hearing is the system we have right now works pretty well for you? I mean, because of the manpower and, and you don't?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't, and if these, with the list that I've got here, it's gonna take, I mean, I could do it, but it's gonna take some time to figure out how many times each one of these people have actually been charged with driving without any insurance or whatever. And I guess, you know, if we got somebody that's got a third time, no insurance, yeah, maybe, maybe your car ought to be towed and we take the plates off of it. But I really would hate to see it go the first time, you know, or maybe even the second time. Then again, okay, somebody doesn't have a, and like what Mark's, what Mike's talking about, somebody forgets, doesn't have a card in their vehicle and they get a ticket for no insurance. Even if they prove that they have the insurance, they still have to pay sixty dollars in the kind of clerk's office in order, because of the court fees and whatever. We start impounding vehicles and we do it on that first time. I don't know. I'm one of those likes to give everybody the benefit of the doubt. We had a young girl come through, goes to college. Mom and dad did give her the card for the, for the vehicle to go and put it in there. A lot of the times I'm able to call to find out if they do have current insurance, okay? So you can find out if you go that extra step and make the call. But, you know, if we're gonna start towing vehicles, then we're gonna have to take that extra step, take the call, in my opinion. Because I would, I don't want to see somebody have the vehicle towed because they forgot to go and put the card in their vehicle. If you can prove that they do have one.
Any other questions or comments?
I think the reason that this has, questions come up, Craig talked about maybe extending the step program or having a own program to eliminate some of these offenders that are out there and some multiple, multiple offenders that we're, we're looking at. Hearing on the, hearing on the news that there's a five-time offender for no insurance. It'd be nice to do something about that to send a message so that the violators would think before they do it again. And again, and again, I, I agree with you. I, I, I like the approach that you're taking in all the law enforcement that you're doing. Bob, as far as some, some flexibility, some latency in, in these cases, and I would agree with that here too. But it'd sure be nice to do something with the multiple offenders.
So Bob, can you find out in the twelve-month span, how many were a third offense or, or higher? So that we can, we can have an idea if it would be fifteen or two or... That might give you an idea of whether your staff would be able to handle it or not.
Out of the ones that I had given to you, and I just kind of tried to go through this list, there were about, and that could be just a rough estimate, there was about ten of those fifty or whatever that basically are repeat offenders. Either no DLs or no insurance.
Chief, part of my reasoning behind that enhanced step program, if you will, is that some of the ways that you guys find out that they don't have a driver's license or insurance is because of a result of a traffic accident. And it's our citizens that are, that are paying for that. I wasn't, I'm not so crazy about, after hearing all the pros and cons of the impounding of vehicles, as I am stepping up enforcement to catch these people before they do KO one of our citizens here and ruin their vehicle, because it's not fair to them. Because probably if you don't have any insurance or driver's license, the person that, that gets hit isn't gonna recoup any money from them. That's what we have to carry on insured mortgages. That's not fair.
I agree.
That's what I was after.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm kind of looking forward to, you know, getting full staff to whatever and can get back into, you know, being proactive as far as traffic departments concerned.
Anything else for Bob? Thank you.
One other comment, one thing to keep in mind, I know that Craig brought this up. You do have to provide a secure holding facility for the vehicle. Typically, you do an inventory of them when you impound the car. They do an inventory when they stop somebody and bring the car in. So you would have to make sure that you would have some secure holding facility for that vehicle, because the city would have potential liability if it was damaged or things were stolen out of it. So what I'd like to do, if, if it's permissible, I'd like to go to the next topic I'm, I think, expected to say something about, and that's the nuisance thing.
Oh, yeah, go ahead. If that's all right with you guys, we can skip ahead.
Skip to that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Agenda. Okay. The question was raised as to, again, repeat offenders of, of the nuisance ordinance. At the present time, when a nuisance citation is filed, we file it under the criminal section of the code, of the Hampton ordinances. The reason we do that is that we ran into some problems filing as municipal infractions, because we'd either have a tenant or somebody who is kind of in the process of abandoning a house. And the only remedy we have to collect the money that's fined or to collect the money that we have to spend in order to abate that nuisance is by filing with the treasurer a tax lien that goes against the real estate taxes. If you have a tenant who's the nuisance problem, or you have somebody that's walking away from the house and leaves a bunch of junk, we really don't have any way to collect that money. It goes against taxes and eventually, with a tenant, they don't own any property, so we can't charge it against real estate taxes. With the other one, typically what happens is when they're abandoning property or walking away, it'll get foreclosed and we'll get cut out, as Ron knows. We've seen a couple of foreclosures where we have a tax liens filed for some reason or another. And the foreclosure comes in and we're behind the mortgage because they're filed ahead of us. And the only re, the only remedy we have is to go in and pay off the mortgage, so now we're number one. But that's not very practical nor very efficient. The other way we used to file was this municipal infraction. And we can provide in the code, step up for first, second, third, fourth, fifth offense, wherever the council would instruct. Right now, we do have a provision under section, I believe it's four, Article Four of the code, that provides for a seven hundred and fifty dollar fine up to that much for first offense, up to a one thousand dollar fine for second offense. I do, I do know that we have some provisions in the code and I didn't look them up that provide for stepped-up fines based on municipal infractions for certain areas. We've set those out in the code. We could do the same with a nuisance. I think we had it like for dog at large and, and vicious dog or something like that. We had these repeat offenses got to be more expensive. We can do the same with a separate addition to the nuisance ordinance and say that it can be filed as a municipal infraction or as a criminal complaint. And then say if it's filed as a municipal infraction, these would be the amounts that we would charge for first, second, third, fourth, fifth offense. Again, probably within some period of time, which I would think would be longer than, than one or two years. It might be three or four or five years. It would just depend. Or you could just leave it anytime they get another nuisance one, it becomes a separate subsequent offense. So I'd, I'd ask for some instructions from the council if they're interested in pursuing that. Again, the difficulty we had in, in two cases when we had municipal infraction and the person was fined and then never paid. So I went to the magistrate with a motion to have him found in contempt of court and the magistrate said that she did not have any authority to put him in jail. She could just fine him again. Which to me was kind of a waste of time. You didn't pay the first fine, what means everybody's thinking pay the second. So that's when we decided then to start filing a criminal complaint, because if they're charged with a criminal complaint and they're found guilty of that, the magistrate then sets the fine. And that fine can be anywhere from sixty-five dollars up to six and a quarter. And then I'm sure if we argue for a bigger fine for second, third, fourth, fifth offense, the magistrate would probably go along that he can't guarantee that. The beauty of that is that once that fine is certified by the magistrate and the court costs are there, if it's not paid, again, the clerk certifies that to the Department of Revenue, who then notifies the Department of Transportation. And if not paid within so many days, the driver's license is gonna be suspended. You'll see that, I, I almost guarantee that at least one or two of those that Bob arrested for driving under suspension was because they hadn't paid the fine and their license got suspended. So that, that's why we filed, because from, if, if we want to file everything as a municipal infraction, again, we do have authority. When that fine is assessed and the court order met that we're required to, they're required to abate it within a certain period, or the city abates it, those costs can also be certified to the treasurer. or the city abates it, those costs can also be certified to the treasurer. Become a lien as part of their real estate taxes against real estate. So if, if we're thinking we have tenants and we don't have any landlord there, maybe the thing to do is serve a notice on, on the owner of the property at the same time. Who then is responsible, make sure that that property is, is nuisance-free in our city ordinance. But I think if, if we decide to go that route, I would think that we'd have to give that owner of that property more notice than we give a tenant. Because they have to go through certain steps to alleviate the problem caught by the tenant. One of those may be to terminate that tenant's lease. And I know about the minimum time that you can serve a residential termination notice is fourteen days, usually thirteen, but fourteen for certain conditions. I'll wait for the council to determine how they wanna proceed on this and we'll not be knowing. We already have enforced the municipal infraction authority, we already have enforced the nuisance authority. We could file an, a municipal infraction on almost every case. We serve criminal cases for certain defendants or whatever. We can certainly repair and have an amendment adopted that would provide for a schedule of municipal infraction fines.
Any questions for Mike at this time?
Okay. Any comments? I do. I do. Okay. So, Mike? Couple of things, and I know that we have discussed this and the counselor at the meetings before. Is one of the frustrations is, is not necessarily second offense nuisance that they've actually gotten a violation or a ticket for it, a citation. But are it the multiple times that you go and have to serve a notice to the same person? Okay. Not only that, but once they have gotten the citation, the timeframe in which they leave that nuisance go until the court orders them to abate that nuisance. Is there anything that we can do as far as them actually getting another citation for every day that that nuisance exists? Or something like that?
You can do that, you can, the code provides that each, each and every day a violation continues, it's considered a separate offense. So you can continue to cite them during the entire time. But that nuisance remains unabated after the notice was served at the time when it ran. So you can continue to cite them.
Even if they haven't gone to court?
Even if they haven't gone to court, because it's still a separate violation now. Obviously you file the second one, the first one they say, the court says wasn't a nuisance. They're probably gonna find the second one wasn't, the third one, the fourth one wasn't. So it's, it's a, it certainly can be done. I mean, you can file, the trouble is gonna be, are we gonna have multiple trials? Or are we gonna be able to consolidate all these in one trial? So that we try them all at the same time. Otherwise have to lock up there, you know, every Thursday and retry the same case only a day later. You know, again, it's a matter of, at least part of it, I can sit down and decide if you wanna handle it that way. And I don't fault any provision in the code that allows you to charge somebody for like second, third, fourth citation, particularly if they cleaned up the first two or three they received. So basically if the citation is made, the nuisance exists after the notice, time period has expired, if we continue to cite them for that same nuisance all the time, one for each day that nuisance continues.
Any other questions, Robert? Any questions from the council? It'll be a tough week.
Come back in order of your discussion of offering a dog swim day at the Aquatics Center seat. Brad?
Hi. Well, I just wanna make a quick note, this was brought up by Val, or you, it could not be a good idea. So we put it on the agenda for discussion. A lot of other towns do it and readily address any issues that Mike bring on. I honestly, you guys asking the questions, I guess, for me, I guess it's, it's a matter of whatever you guys want. We can make it happen. Matter of duration, kind of time span, or however long you wanna do it. I just would ask that it be the last day that we're open for a specific amount of time because there, there is gonna be some issues over here and some other stuff. You know, with the, the pool, I'm not sure how, if that's the chlorine, the chemicals, all that other stuff. But it's at the end of the season when we'll be closing anyway. I guess that's totally up to you guys' discretion. I'm not sure how I'd staff it because I will not be rescuing a dog myself or having any of my other guards rescue a dog just for the fact that, you know, potential for, you know, being bit or scratched or whatever. So, you know, it'd be one of those swim at your own risks type deal. You know, with your canine or whatever type situation. We wouldn't be open for public swim, for people to come in and swim at the same time as this goes on. I have no idea how other facilities do it, I know it's been brought up in the past. And, you know, it's just a matter of what you guys want and we can try to make it happen, you know, one way or the other. So, I mean, I'm open to suggestions, I'm open up to whatever you guys want. To me, I don't know how, I mean, just because one facility does it, doesn't mean we have to do it type of deal. I know we've talked about it the last two years and we've chose not to do it for one reason or the other. But we're always open for new ideas and it's up to you guys. So you can ask me questions or give me comments, I mean, really, I have no discretion or yes or no.
Doug's got something.
Other than the fact.
Doug's creeping up on me.
Yeah, that's okay. Just other than that, you know, I, I won't put any of my guards in jeopardy. If there's a dog that is struggling or whatever, we'll help it the best we can. But nobody will be going in to make a rescue or save, to put themselves in jeopardy. So that's all I have to say as far as my requirements, as far as dealing with the situation. But other than that, I might have some more information. I think thoughts?
I think basically the benefits of having it at the end of the year, you do, you have it on the very last night typically, that's what most communities do. And part of the benefit to that is, for what we were talking about earlier, the dogs will actually go in there and instead of letting that sit for three days until the chlorine residual goes completely out, it really speeds up the process to whereas maybe it's only a day or two depending on how many dogs visit. But what happens is that it just eats up the chlorine residual and it's actually healthy and good now. We have strainers and stuff for the, for the hair. And I could tell you, and soaking the water department boys, when they go down to clean out the strainers, we got hair anyway and it's gonna happen. So it's really, wouldn't be a huge ordeal, I think, in that realm. As far as putting some guidelines and stuff together, as far as, you know, probably keeping the, keeping the dog on the leash will probably be a good thing. But we can sure talk to some other communities, I know these cities typically been a big one that does that. And they get a pretty good turnout. But, oh, just something new, you know? So, and I talked to Val briefly about this thought, you know, might not be a bad idea to consider that. And I think there's probably some people that would take advantage of that.
Val, do you wanna add anything?
No, well, not, Brad brought up a couple of things I hadn't thought of. And I do think some research needs to be done on what other communities do and how it works down there. And go from there.
Brad, what's the last day of pools gonna be open this year?
Labor Day, or, yeah, Labor Day. We actually, we're going, we have this whole week and next whole week. School starts the nineteenth for Hampton. So nineteenth through that Friday, we will be closed due to school. And then we'll open up Saturday, Sunday of that, that weekend, I'm not quite sure the dates of that. Would be the...
Sunday's the first.
Well, it's talking about, it'd be the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, we'd be open that Saturday and Sunday. Limited hours on Sunday just because it's a school day the next day. So we'll be open twelve to six, we won't take our five to six break. And then we'll be open Saturday, Sunday, and Monday of the Labor Day weekend. And then that'll be our final two rounds, so. Any other questions, updates you want, or do you want to go ahead and do it before? Anything else, any other questions pool-related? Deal with it.
Okay.
Going, going, yeah? All right, thanks, guys.
Thanks, Brad. Brad just wishes this would've been the first item on the agenda.
Amen.
Finally, we have a discussion of snowmobile ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor, again. As directed, I was gonna have Shirley Smith and a local citizen from the southwest part of town that raised some issues previously regarding a snowmobile complaint. And I actually did invite Shirley to meet with myself and Gary McVicker, Gary and I actually met today. And had a nice discussion about snowmobiles. And Shirley did not wanna meet, but she did. And I, and I've talked to her on a number of different days. I think at least four days, I know we've had discussions where she's called. Basically, her recommendations is what she would like to see, she'd like to see all snowmobiles trailered. Either to the trail or out of town when you're further used. And then she did discuss or inquire about the possibility to have all snowmobiles within the city limits be registered with it at City Hall. I haven't done much research on that, I don't know if that's even legal, but we could sure look into that for her. I've talked to Chief Schaefer briefly, but he's here, so I'll let him advise you what his thoughts are on this. And then, and Gary's here, but you know, when I got out of Gary's conversation, he can correct me if I'm wrong, is he doesn't see a need to change the current code. He believes he can advertise and publicize and educate. And that's gonna reach a certain amount of people. But in, in the reality of things, the people that are gonna break the law, they're gonna break the law no matter what you do. So, but, but there is that initiative and, and, and from the snowmobile club, you know, to, to get involved with some of this process with the advertising and publicizing. So I think that's great. But Gary's here, that's kinda where we've, we've ended some things. And we could have some more discussion, and Chief Schaefer's here and he can let you know what his thoughts are.
Okay, Chief?
My initial thought was actually, basically, for inside the city limits other than the trail, basically not to have snowmobiles on the city streets. I guess, I kinda thought that anybody that had a snowmobile is gonna have a trailer. And I just was talking to Gary just now and he was telling me that that's not the case. I guess, I guess what we need, what we can do is we just make sure that it is publicized on the radio when we go into that season, what the, you know, basically what the ordinance is and refers to snowmobiles and running across other people's property, across the cities, right away or whatever, across driveways. And if that occurs and we're able to catch them, we just go and cite them. You know, it isn't like one of those deals, hey, can't be doing this, you need to do something else. You know, even if it is the first time, we just go and cite them. I guess I don't know what else to do, because I know that we've had issues in the past with people recreationally riding their snowmobiles. But how do you know that for sure? Unless you do see them in one street and then, you know, half an hour later you see them just down the block or whatever, where they haven't gone directly out of town or, or gone directly to a gas station or whatever. It's, it's, it's just tough to go and enforce. And I guess that's the reason why my initial reaction was, you know what? You just go ride them in the city limits, other than on the trail. I guess maybe that might not be fair, but yes, that's my thoughts. So I don't want all the snowmobiles mad at me, but I guess I thought everybody had trailers. My idea was a trailer about the Beans Lake and they're riding the trail, so.
You don't want a snowmobile, Chief?
No, I don't.
Okay. Gary, did you have anything going on?
Yeah, I just, you know, like Doug said, we discussed, you know, we need to do a better job preseason, you know, addressing the issue, making people aware. Some people, you hit them with a two-by-four and they aren't gonna listen to you. You know, just catch them, make an example of them. You know, we may have to work with the chief on those days when it's absolutely impassable for vehicles in town where we may have to have a list of people that would come in and, you know, help. So, but, yeah. And another thing, I'm on the state corridor trail committee. And we want north, south, east, west corridor trail going across the state, coming through every county. So we may have that, you know, especially with the, with our trail. At least in east-west corridor going through town. So that could bring in more, more traffic, more revenue. You know, there's gonna be the club and the DNR's responsibility to make sure that's posted and taken care of. Like I told Doug, I think, you know, what you have is a good ordinance. But still, there's people that just don't care. And it's gonna take other people in our club to help enforce the law. So you see somebody, you're gonna have to say, it was him, you know, and make an example.
Questions or comments from the council?
Currently, the ordinance does not prohibit them from being on the street with ones that are going directly out of town or being tracked.
That is correct. Most of their, most of their route out of town.
And the issue at hand is there have been some properties that have been damaged because they were voiding going on the street, probably because the street was cleared and they've gone across part of the property and done some damage. But not a huge number of situations and we've not been able to catch them at this point.
I guess, and again, like, like Gary was talking about, you know, it might just be a select few that are causing problems. But the issues that we've had in the past, especially up on Twelfth Avenue, is you have somebody here in town that lives in that area or close to that area. And they go out of town, do the ride and come back in. Well, how many times a day, you know, they're, they're doing that, coming and going all the time? You know, it's not like these guys take off, go out and go to Chapin or wherever. They're, but they're taking the direct route out and the direct route back, but it's multiple times. I guess, you know, how, how do you, how do you determine, you know, what point is it that it's recreationally riding? You know, or if they're just going directly in and out? And unfortunately Sixth Avenue would probably be one of the direct routes. Because they come up Sixth Avenue, go to the, go to the gas stations. So.
Yeah, Gary?
You know, since the trail's been open, I, we haven't had that much good snow to see how much traffic we take off.
Right.
Your twelfth avenue, but, yeah. That should take some traffic off there, I would think.
Yeah, I do, that was before the trail was built.
Yeah. Cause I know even us, when we came, you know, I lived east of town, if we wanted to go west, that's the way we went through town was that way. I mean, yeah, we could swing around the south side. So, you know. We'll, we'll work with you, you know, as, as a club. You know, and if we gotta have somebody come in and help Bob in those situations where it's, you know, the only way you're gonna get anybody is on a sled, then we'll have to arrange for people in our club to help. And so, you know, and we do have access to rescue sleds for those situations. You know, and the Conservation Board does have a snowmobile that, and the Rangers, you know, we can pull the rescue sleds with. One's in Latimer and the other one's at my house, so.
I think it's obvious that you're willing to work with us and the club is willing to work with us, that's obvious. And I think we've noted that the problem isn't the club, it's, it's, it's other folks. And like you say, it doesn't matter probably what we do with the code, you know?
You know, you just don't, I, I'd like to not get those of us that obey.
Right.
Hurt by those that don't.
Right.
So that's where we're gonna take the responsibility to address that.
Sure.
And help Bob, so, sorry.
Councilors, questions or comments?
Well, I know that...
Well, I know, and I think I've said this before, but several of the property owners on the north side of 12th Avenue, from Highway sixty-five going east, have eliminated the problem on their property by putting out some reflectors. You guys have seen those reflectors there. Do you see any more things that can be done as a city to eliminate the crossing of private property or the recording of someone who's crossing private property? That's really the issue here, is catching the scoundrels, the guys that are not doing it right.
We've, we've done that before, my wife and I, when we've seen people come in to either visit our children or, you know, come in and gone across maybe your mother's yard or somewhere and say, hey, no, that's not the way you go. You go, you know, down the street and now around, you know, we've, we've tried to enforce that on a polite basis to avoid the rest of us getting hurt by this. So, yeah, we've worked on the lookout to make it city friendly also because we don't want to lose it.
I think the thing that I get complaints about too is the trail's speed. It's the speed in which some of the people are operating on the trail. I mean, it's a straight shot, like Gary said, we haven't had a lot of good snow, but the few times we did have snow, they were really scooting down there, some of them. Well, I don't know how the chief is going to catch them unless you have guys at each end of the block and somebody was in the middle with radar or something, I don't know, but to what extent you have to get into, but unfortunately, some of them's going to record for all of them. We've been pretty lenient over the years, so this comes up about every year or every other year. And, you know, maybe just come to a point in time where the council says, you know what, enough's enough, we're just going to ban them this year and let them go look out for a year and see what happens. But it's not fair to the club members, but these are willing to take initiative to help police the situation and I think that's about all we can ask right now.
And maybe when we publicize, we could add that, that, you know, that you're working on it and this is what the possible outcome could be if, you know, unfortunately, these few people that, you know, continue to rock the boat for everybody else, if this is what could happen. I think that is a good thing to point out to them.
Diane, you have anything to add, questions?
I don't want to see us banning them from town. This is, you know, this is something they enjoy doing. I have no problem with it. I think it's just unfortunately a matter of enforcement, which is tough.
Not necessarily advocating banning them from town. What I'm saying is banning from city streets. So they use the trail in order to operate. And, you know, if there was one main route, you know, not, and I guess what I'm saying is not beside streets, things like that. That's what I was looking at, but.
See, you know, when we have fun runs, you know, we go into Dakotas and it's an issue getting in there, you know, somebody does too good of a job removing snow and...
Well, see, and that's one of the situations I see coming down Sixth Street Southwest because, you know, when it's cleaned off good enough that there is no snow other than on the right away, but then they're going across people's driveways. You know, when they do that.
I was going to say, when we come in, you know, if we come in over the river overpass and if there's no snow, you ride as close to the street, well, between the street and the sidewalk, is that private property or is that city's property?
Officially.
Officially, city property. City right away. Property owners have to maintain it. So if they have a new concrete apron that's poured, gets scratched, then they get offended at that.
I like to say it's psychologically branded, does officially not look.
That's a good one, you know. Okay. So, you know, but...
Because it's going, it's on the sidewalks, door going over the...
Mm-hmm. And I know Dakotas, when we have a lot of snow, it does well during the snow season. You know, and that's the only place we come to in town besides gas stations and, you know, catching gas cases. We do not come downtown. We've never had an organics event that comes downtown. So. They actually used to years ago at Pitt Row, that used to be a stop. That was a lot worse right downtown. You know, that's just, you know, it doesn't work. I don't ride my sled.
Sure. And the best place to go is to be through the alley.
Mm-hmm.
Because the alley usually isn't cleaned up, you know, down the bare mountain, you know, the bare concrete.
The other thing I was thinking, you know, coming into Dakotas, now that the Historical Society threw that fence back, we got more room to operate there, but then you got to cross the river tracks. And that can be an issue, both safety and car nut equipment. I lost the whole front end of the sled across the road, so. And I was creeping, but sure, it's a topic. So, we'll work with it, yeah.
Okay. I appreciate that. So what's council's wishes at this time? Do we want to move forward with some type of change or do we have Mike drive it up or do we only leave it the way it is?
I would prefer that we do more public relations announcements, call on you for enforcement to encourage all of the snowmobilers to police themselves and their fellow snowmobilers, whether they're friends or not friends, so that the enjoyment isn't as everybody.
You know, we work with the Conservation Board, we got them a lot more of those snowmobiles signs, you know, that are posted over around the cemetery because there are almost snowmobiles beyond that portion of the...
Correct.
I mean, so if you need more signage, you know, we can make, you know, we have the ability to make some signs that specifically say, you know, whatever we need.
Okay. Allie, so you're agreeing with Dick?
I agree.
Diane?
Yep.
Great.
I'd like to say stick with what we've got, but like I said earlier, if, I don't know, we have a little payment on a kind of basis if it doesn't work, monitor it through halfway through the season or just accordingly.
Okay. Good. Anything else for discussion or? All right, if there's no other public comment, then we'll adjourn at seven twenty.